Jen, you got to tell them the story, but I've got, keep that story in mind, you're first.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we didn't have an awkward silence, so, but next week.
Text me and remind me.
Got it. Those that care to, please stand for an opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. Mr. Cameron, will you lead us in prayer?
Let us pray. Father, we just thank you for this day and thank you for this community. Why don't we just stop and pause and pray for the families that lost their children this last weekend and for the individual that lost his life that was in fire service. I cannot completely understand how they must be grieving, but I just pray that you would comfort them and be with our families as our community and the children of this community mourn their loss. Just be with us tonight, guide and direct us in all that we do and all that we say.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for being here. I'm going to start the meeting off with citizen participation. As a reminder, this is for anything not on the agenda. If you're here wishing to speak to something about, something that is not on the agenda, please approach the podium. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Seeing none, I'm in close citizen participation, move on to consent agenda. I welcome, I need a motion and a second to, sorry, let me start all over. Going too fast, I apologize, totally my fault. Does any of the council have any questions or comments about items number one or two on the agenda? Seeing none, I now need a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero. Moving on to boards, commissions, and committee schedules, this one's a little bit different, so pay attention to this. City Council Budget Workshop, November 1st, 2022 at 5:30. We think that's going to go for an hour, hour and a half, right? Something like that.
Two hours.
Two hours, two hours. You see, I was trying to be optimistic and.
It's budget.
Budget. It'll be fun. Board of Adjustment Meeting, November 3rd, 2022 is canceled. Planning and Zoning Meeting, November 7th, 2022 is also canceled. City Council Meeting, November 8th, 2022 is still on. So, moving on to old business and table items, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 22-57 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
In ordinance of the city council, amending the municipal code of the city of Republic, Missouri by amending Title 8, Fees, Chapter 805 Fee Schedule, Section 805.030, Alcoholic Beverages, Section 805.040, Animals, Section 805.050, Buildings and Zoning, Section 805.060, Business, Section 805.070, Fire Protection and Prevention, Section 805.080, Parks and Recreation Fees, Section 805.090, Special Event Fees, and Section 805.100, Utility Administration.
Thank you, ma'am. Any updates from the city? Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 22-57, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote, voice vote, correct?
Yes.
Excellent.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Gerlick?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Updike?
Aye.
Councilmember Gerke?
Aye.
Councilmember Self?
Aye.
Ordinance passes, seven to zero. Moving on to item number four on our agenda, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 22-58 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
In ordinance of the city council, approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately 10.44 acres located at 688 South Kansas Avenue from agricultural AG and medium-density single-family R1M to multifamily residential R3.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening.
I assume there's an update since you're standing here.
There is an update. Thank you, Mayor. Karen Haynes, builds administrator. There is no change in our recommendation for approval of the rezoning request. However, we did receive a petition that staff did validate for nonapproval of the rezoning request. Again, we did validate all of the signatures and it does require a supermajority, which is two-thirds vote in the affirmative, to approve the rezoning moving forward.
So, if I understand it correctly, because there is a petition that has been properly certified and confirmed, that means that we have to have six or more vote in favor of rezoning the property?
Correct.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions or discussion from council on this issue?
I just want to address the audience. I know, I know I tend to do this on these big topics, but I really find, I just want to respect you all. And Mr. Wright, because I know this is a big deal to you guys, I know it, I don't take it lightly that we sit up here and that eight votes determine something that means so much to you, so I always want to speak out, especially since you guys are in my ward. But, Mr. Wright, I know as a businessman, I understand you needing to make, you know, make this profitable for you, but after watching planning and zoning and being able to talk to residents, go out to your homes and see the land and be able to walk the land and kind of get a feel for it, not the land, I didn't go on your land, but around it, that is the reason I cannot vote for this rezoning on this one. Just going from medium-density to ag to multifamily just isn't appropriate use of this land, in my opinion, after doing all that, and I just wanted to honor you and respect you by letting you know why I'm voting the way I'm voting, because I know it's a big deal to you along with you guys. Just say that before I vote.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other discussion or, yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate what Jen had to say. I came to a little bit of a different conclusion after going over all the, everything that had been presented to council. I've been out by the site several different times, I've looked at it, I've looked at the concerns that everyone brought here to council. I feel that staff has done a very good job in addressing these concerns and that all, a lot of these concerns will be, of course, addressed once, if this was to pass, a lot of those would be addressed in the, in our ordinances and everything else that zoning requires from that property. I'm looking at this from a standpoint too of a private property and kind of a situation where 49% needs of protection from a 51% of people. I do understand that this is a change in zoning, but I also look at this property and everything that the developer has done the last two years and working with the city to find a solution to fit this property. I'm looking at the tax revenue, a lot of things that we have here in Republic are based upon our sales tax revenue, and so the more people we have, and I'm not looking to stack the city, but at the same time when we turn down, if we were to turn down these types of developments, it really doesn't leave a lot of good options for the developer to even develop that property as I'm looking at it, just from the standpoint of, he certainly has to make money and has to certainly make it worth his time to build that. I'm very, I completely understand when people say that they only want single-family residential in the neighborhood, I can totally identify with that, but I do feel as, as being sitting here on city council, I do need to protect the private property rights of the property that has applied for zoning, just as much as I would protect the private property rights of all the citizens that have come here to speak before council. So, I came to a little bit of a different conclusion for a number of different reasons, but I do agree with staff on the recommendation for approval of this.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Any other discussion from council? Seeing.
Oh, I think I want to just, I just, I think they didn't recommend approval of that, if I'm correct.
They did.
We did.
Yeah.
Oh, oh.
I wasn't, yeah, I wasn't planning on really saying anything here. You know, Jen and I are fortunate that the people in our ward reached out to us and did so in such a way that was, I think, as emotionless as they could be being that it affected them so closely. I wanted to show my appreciation for allowing us to come out and meet with you individually, for sharing, you know, your thoughts on it, and as much as I hear, you know, private property and someone should do with it, you know, what they will, I also understand that, that private property exists within a community and I feel like it's our responsibility to make sure that the people within that community already are heard and represented, and so that's how I'll be.
Thank you, sir.
And I do agree, one thing I would like to say to Mr. Franklin is that when they bought it, it was already zoned R1M and ag, so it was a big, it was a big leap of faith to, oh, county, that's right, that's right. Still being a leap of faith of when you buy that, not having the guarantee that you can go to multifamily, it's definitely a leap of faith, but I also think as city council members, we, I definitely want to put the needs of our community before developers, in a sense, although I'm so grateful for developers, I, I do believe that there is, we have to create, you know, this place where our residents feel protected and we can do what's best for the city as a whole. So, when I do look at the land, it does feel like you're trying to fit a square peg into a round hole, and just that way, not that I'm trying to say that we don't need that, we definitely do in this city, it just doesn't feel like the appropriate space for that type of development. So, I just wanted to remind the council of that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Mr. Franklin?
Mr. Mayor, one of the things that's always really difficult to me with zoning is the fact that, you know, we have zoning and it's set up when a property is annexed into the city and it's zoned a certain way and then it progresses, you know, based upon what the property owner wants to do with it. For zoning, it's something that I can't really necessarily view zoning as what it is now as what it's always going to be. I feel like that's setting a lot of limitations upon the property owner himself for whatever their purpose should be for that private property. And although, in my mind, I would like single-family homes everywhere, and that's the best possible, possibility for me in, in giving citizens the biggest vested interest in the community, but at the same time as well, you know, a new home, as we're driving up Kansas Avenue towards this property, I see a sign that says new homes starting at $234,000, which I understand, you know, that's not expensive, but then when you step into today's cost of, of developing the infrastructure for these types of properties, it gets very costly and, and very, it's, really hurts anyone who wants to develop a property or create jobs from their private property in developing that, from having any option other than an option that's not viable for them from a financial standpoint. So, when the zoning, to me, I just really have a struggle with that, is keeping that zoning designation forever. So, I'm open to changing the zoning just because that property, as I see it, if this is not approved tonight, I would say that more than likely, it's probably going to sit there for a while before it's developed. So, as much as I, I do appreciate the citizens coming and voicing their concerns, and I did go through all of them, I've read through all of the emails, all of the phone calls that everyone has given to me, so I just wanted to kind of make that clear that.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Any other council members? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 22-58.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Updike?
Nay.
Councilmember Gerke?
Nay.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Nay.
Councilmember Wilson?
Nay.
Councilmember Gerlick?
Nay.
Councilmember Self?
Nay.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Ordinance fails to pass at a vote of six to, excuse me, one to six to zero. Moving on to new business, item number five on the agenda, this is 22-59. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 22-59 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
In ordinance of the city council, approving the final plot of the Frisco Square Phase Four subdivision.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. The builds department received an application for a final plot for Frisco Square Phase Four in early October. The final plot of Frisco Square Phase Four will legally divide approximately 26.5 acres of property into two large lots, and it also includes a dedication of right-of-way and utility easements. The final plot does include 998 linear feet of new street and the same in new sidewalk. The final plot does conform to the approved development plan of the Frisco Square Development, originally approved in 2001. The builds department has reviewed the final plot in conformance with our regulations and the approved development plan, and we are recommending approval.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have questions from council? Seeing none, please remember this is a first read, so if you have questions, get with staff before the next meeting. Moving on to item number six on the agenda, this is 22-60. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 22-60 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Madam Clerk.
In ordinance of the city council, approving the final plot of the Valley Trail Phase Two subdivision.
Thank you, ma'am. Still going, huh?
Thank you. The builds department received an application for the final plot for Valley Trail Phase Two in late July. This particular subdivision is a PDD. It includes approximately 15.26 acres of land and will divide it into 37 residential lots. It also includes a portion of a public street dedication and sidewalks and also public utilities. This particular subdivision is, a portion of it is private and does include dedication of both the public sidewalk, public street, and then also a portion of this subdivision will be private street, and that is the southern portion that is directly south of Grace Avenue. Specifically, six lots are accessed from Henry Avenue and Grace, which will be accessed from the public right-of-way. The remainder, or 31 lots, are within the private gated section of the subdivision, which does include that private sidewalk and private streets. The developer is responsible for the construction of all sidewalks within Phase Two as the lots are actually built. The private streets are the responsibility of the property owner or the, excuse me, the property owners association or the homeowners association. It does conform to the development plan that was originally approved by city council on April 3rd, 2018. Staff has reviewed it and we do believe it's in compliance with all of the applicable ordinances. We are recommending approval.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions from council? Seeing none, again, please remember this is a first read, get with staff before the next meeting. Moving on to item number seven on the agenda, this is 22-61. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 22-61 by title only, please. Got a motion?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven to zero. Madam Clerk.
In ordinance of the city council, reaffirming the gross receipts tax to be imposed upon electric corporations conducting applicable business within the city.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes. Megan McCullough, City Attorney. The ordinance that we have in front of us is simply, it's a statutory requirement that we have anytime the Missouri Public Service Commission grants a tariff increase to over 7%, essentially it triggers certain provisions under state law that would potentially require us as a taxing authority or liberty to reduce or roll back our rate that we currently have in place. The statute also allows taxing authorities like ourselves to choose not to do so. If we choose not to do so, we have to enact an ordinance, and that's what we can do. So, really, essentially, this is what you're seeing in front of us, if the ordinance were required to act if we want to keep our current rate. Our current rate is 3%, so it's actually really low compared to some of our new rate and conditions. But, that's what we have in front of us.
Questions from council?
Did we explore the possibility of, of giving a reduction on this at all, or did we have any thoughts on that?
Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Andrew Nelson, Deputy City Administrator. So, yes, Mr. Cameron and I and Ms. McCullough, we had a discussion about that, and I think what we lack from is giving an explanation of what that franchise fee really is, the purpose behind it. So, all utilities that are in the rights-of-way in the city of Republic have a franchise agreement. That fee that we assess is essentially like a permission slip, the administration of allowing them to be in the right-of-way. I hate to use a bad example, but the AT&amp;T fiber discussion that we have, there is a certain amount of administration and effort that goes into allowing someone into the right-of-way and a certain amount of, kind of a, nuisance is not the right word, but it's, it's a process.
Might be the right word.
Yeah.
Speak freely.
Yeah. So, I mean, that.
We had a hard meeting, let's just keep going.
The right-of-way is for utilities and we're tasked with managing that, and that's really what that fee is for.
Is that similar with, you said all of utilities, so does like Ozark Electric, do they have a franchise fee as well?
Ooh, no. So, the Public Service Commission does not allow for a co-op to have a franchise agreement with a city over, is it 1,500, 2,500? I'd have to look, I'm not 100% sure, but much smaller than Republic, so we couldn't actually have a franchise agreement with Ozark Electric. In most cases where they're in the right-of-way, it is predating the existence of right-of-way, so it was served by Ozark Electric when it was in the county, or they have their own easement. They, they actually don't like to locate in our right-of-way if they, if they can avoid it.
My memory is failing me, is this one that we reaffirm every year, every two years, three years, or is this something that we happened, like, kind of came out of the blue?
No, this is a new one, so I think, the way I read it, and Megan can confirm for me, but in the event that a utility wants to raise their rate more than 7%, they have to go to the Public Service Commission to get granted that authority, and then the Public Service Commission says, hey, community, do you want to offset this over 7% by reducing your franchise fee? In this case, I believe they're applying, they've been approved up to 7.81?
It's 7.38%.
38, okay, so it's a fraction above 7%. There are other communities whose franchise fee is much higher, so it would be less impactful to them to lower their franchise fee. So, if, in a community that had, say, a 10% franchise fee, it might be easier for them to offset that. Ours is pretty low.
Thank you. Other questions from council? Seeing none? Oh, sorry.
Just a general question, and I know I've seen this before in our tax discussions, but does this franchise tax fee, does that go into our general fund?
It does. It's collected and placed into the general fund.
Sure. Thank you. I'll pause longer. Mr. Franklin? Good, all right. I got the thumbs up, we're good. Please remember this is a first read, get with staff with other questions before the next meeting. Moving on to other business, specifically resolutions, this is 22-R-67, a resolution of the city council authorizing execution of a contract amendment with SAP Design Associates Architects for additional architectural services on parks and recreation projects. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution 22-R-67.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Good evening.
Good evening. Jennifer Mayfield, Assistant Parks and Recreation Director. So, if you recall, in February of this year, council approved a contract for us to go into design development and renderings to prepare for our ballot initiatives through SAP Design Associates Architects. Their role, that was kind of phase one for us, which is developing renderings in order to prepare for those initiatives. In August, the citizens of Republic voted to renew our 1/4 cent parks capital improvement sales tax, which we are very grateful for, but it's time to get moving on phase two of those architectural services. That includes final design development, more firm cost estimates, construction documents in order to prepare us to bid and enter into construction. So, our target goal for the JR Martin Park project is spring of 2024, and then our target goal to open the aquatic center expansion portion is summer of 2024. Those are just goals, but that's what we're working towards, and in order to get there, we have to start moving on, on the phase two work with the architects. So, their compensation structure for that, it is percentage-based on final cost of construction. So, for the aquatic center expansion, that's 10.75% of the final construction costs would be paid to the architects, and on the JR Martin Park project, 11% of the final construction costs would be paid to the architects. So, for the aquatic center, as of right now, our estimated construction cost is 6.6 million, that can change, it can fluctuate, and the Martin project is 1.5 million, again, it could change. We're doing our best to keep those costs down. We want to be careful stewards of taxpayer dollars, of course. Interest rates have gone up a little bit, so we're kind of looking at that to determine what we're going to be able to borrow, but again, we're, we're working behind the scenes just to make sure we're careful stewards and we don't do anything that would keep, make the cost extremely high. I did want to point out, this is just for Rack and, Rack, Republic Aquatic Center and JR Martin Park only. We'll be bringing an amendment to you later for the complex when we move into that portion, but right now, we're focusing on these two projects, and then the complex will come at a later date. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Cameron?
Jennifer, I hate to do this to you, but it just caught, caught me, is this includes the Olson portion of the fees too, or is this just the architectural? So, this is the engineering plus the architectural?
Yes.
Okay, very good, thanks.
It just does not include project expenses, which that's furniture, fixtures, all of that stuff, whenever we get to that portion, that's not included, but yeah, these percentages include architectural and engineering.
Mr. Gerke?
I assume at some point in the process, there was a bid process on this, or how did we do?
Yes, yes, we did. We selected SAP through a bid process, and that contract that we signed with them allowed for us to bring amendments in order to move into phase two.
Thank you. And, Mr. Franklin?
Mr. Ms. Mayfield, and so, the way I understand this, the, the cost of this additional architectural services for the projects, that's, that's the compensation of the 10.75 and the 11% that you talked about, so that's just all rolled into one toward the end?
Yes, so they, they, I think I understand. They do, they will start billing us periodically, so we'll start seeing expenses come in based upon these cost estimates, but the final cost will determine exactly what we pay in the end.
And these services are part of that final cost? Okay, I understand. Thank you.
All right, seeing no other question, oh, Mr. Cameron?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, so I, I do want to tell you that the question that I asked of Mrs. Mayfield regarding the engineering and the architecture is very relevant because that fee that you're paying, say, at 10%, I've seen that as high as 17%, so to see both the engineering and the architectural rolled into one is actually a cost savings that's already being recognized through that effort, and I just want to point that out, that 7% on $4 million is a material savings that they've already been able to achieve by working with SAP and Olson, who's not mentioned in there, but I, I do appreciate you pointing that out because I do believe there's already been a savings, and I know that you guys are working to reduce that cost, but that's, Jennifer, I want to tell you something, that is beyond your, y'all's control, and our job is to communicate how those costs have risen, so I know that weighs heavily on you.
Yes, it does.
And so, I just want to point out that 7% is material on $4 million, so was that $280,000, just by working hard to do that? And so, sometimes I think we look at $280,000 and think, it's not 4 million, it's still $280,000 the taxpayer saves, so great job.
Any other discussion, comments, questions? Seeing none, and as this is a resolution, I can call it immediately for a vote, which is what I will do. All those in favor of 22-R-67, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution carries, seven to zero. Moving on to item number nine on our agenda, this is 22-R-68, a resolution of the city council declaring the intent to reimburse itself for certain expenditures incurred in connection with improvements to parks and recreation facilities. I always want to say faculties. I'm, phew, did I get that right? Facilities?
Facilities.
Perfect, all right, awesome. We should probably get a motion and a second to take up this resolution?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please continue.
Hello again, Jennifer Mayfield, Assistant Parks and Recreation Director. So, this resolution flows perfectly with the one right before. So, this resolution flows perfectly with the one right before. So, with approval to move into Phase Two, architectural services, we will start incurring expenses on these projects. So, this reimbursement resolution, we have to state that we intend to reimburse ourselves for these costs whenever we do take out the debt to move forward. So, this is just stating that we do plan to do that. We'll start incurring expenses almost immediately, probably as we enter into those next phases of services. I did want to mention, we do have to provide an estimated project cost or borrow amount on this resolution. Our initial estimated project cost was 23 million. I did check, there's no harm in us going above that, so we did include 30 million just in case things change, we're able to borrow a little bit more, didn't want to lock us into that 23 million. So, that's why it states 30 million in there. We do not have to borrow that amount, it's just a maximum.
Questions from council?
Answer any questions.
Gerke?
To clarify, the reimbursement comes from what fund? It says to reimburse itself from architectural, where does that?
So, it would be reimbursed to whoever paid those expenses initially, so either out of Parks and Recreation or General Fund, I'm guessing, if they need to assist in any way. It would be reimbursed either back to our fund or to General Fund.
Until the time the bond is issued?
Yes.
And do we have timing on that?
We, we're just kind of waiting to see, and when we made the initial call, I think it was beginning of September, just to kind of feel out where we were at, we found out that those interest rates are, have increased. So, we're trying to be a little bit strategic there, but I don't know exactly when we'll take those out, but probably end of this year, early next year would be when we would be looking to take out that debt.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
And this might be me showing ignorance here, which I'm fine doing my whole career, I feel like. Is this project cancelable? Like, let's say, like, something crazy happens, right? Like, cement goes up 10 times the cost of what it normally is, you know? Is this something that we could be like, ah, we really wanted that water park, but man, cement, you know? Like, let's probably not do this right now, or let's not ever do this. I mean, is that, is that an option? Like, I'm just curious, or is postponing it an option if something was to happen?
Postponing it is an option. Canceling it, I'll just, frankly, that's not an option. That's what the voters voted for. So, we wouldn't be taking away any of these projects. The voters are excited about them, we're excited about them. Can we postpone? Yes. Do we want to? No. But if we have to, we will. We do think there's ways that we can get to where we need to be. We've already brought the cost down on those two projects a little bit, knowing that we still have the complex to come. But no, we wouldn't cancel them. We would just, if the scenario happened where we had to postpone, we would, but we, at this point, we're definitely not looking to do that.
So, I ask the extreme question, basically, to say, like, do you guys have a cutoff as far as, like, interest rates as they continue to rise? Are you guys like, have you, you haven't looked at it and said, like, okay, if it hits this, we're going to postpone because it's going to cost us too much money?
We haven't set that yet, no, no.
This could be an ignorance, because I don't know much about banks. Like, say, interest rates go up, and we lock in, and we still go forward, and then they go back down. Can you refinance those kind of?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
So, this is probably what the American people in and of themselves are worrying about and wondering with everything that we're doing. Everything is on the table of discussion, but just like Mrs. Mayfield stated, we have to oblige what we told the voters we were going to do in a certain amount of time. Now, at the same time, I think that what I've also found in communicating, when you have to communicate, it's just like we had to do tonight with raising sewer rates. Nobody wants to tell a bad message, but there are certain things that are beyond your control. Say it's the economy. When we took this to the voters, the cost has now almost gone up, I mean, wages have gone up 30%. And that, and that can change through elections. I'm not trying to make it political, but we just see how elections change interest rates. So, like I told Jared, we're not going to go out until after the midterm elections because the markets do change after elections take place. Now, I'm not saying it's going to, we don't have a crystal ball to what that is, but I think that we have to be responsible enough to say, if interest rates jump to 8%, borrowing in that when it may go back down to 6 or 4, I don't know when that could be, but that could be three or four years down the road. This is not going to be, I mean, I'm not an economist, but in certain forms, it's not going to be a one-year correction of the market. It's going to take some time. And so, I think those are decisions we have to make of whether we, when we go to issue, and we go out and put the call sheet out with, and have the meeting with the S&amp;P, and we'll get a rating to understand what that looks like. I think we have to make a decision of what we can borrow or what could we cash flow, because I'll say this, I mean, like we said, we borrowed the 45 million for the wastewater side. If we were to borrow that today, it would be, it'd probably be another, I think we saved $2.7 million worth of interest back in June. It's probably like 5.4, almost $6 million in additional interest that you'd be taking. So, I will say this, just to your project and any project, with the cost of materials going up 30% or even higher, I'm not sure how they can forecast or project it, because I think that they told the citizens, and I don't hold them, I hold no harm to them because, like, those prices have changed from the first time they went out and did the estimates, and we saw it on a wastewater plant jumping 25 million in six months. It's just very difficult, and I think we got difficult decisions to make, but ever canceling a project would not be at the voters' discretion. I think that we have to figure out how we're going to make those projects phased in one at a time, and maybe have to decide which ones matter the most to the community, because that's really not a decision I feel like that they should have to make on their own.
Does that raise any other questions?
I wish we got that crystal ball.
Yeah, crystal ball would make things easier. All right, as this is a resolution, we can call it immediately for a vote, which is what I will do on issue number 22-R-68. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution passes, seven to zero. Moving on to reports from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank everybody that came out tonight. I know coming to two meetings in a row, actually coming to planning and zoning, you actually had a back-to-back week there, and then coming to the meeting tonight to express your concerns with the rezoning. We appreciate your communication and your involvement with the project. I'd be remiss if I did not stop just to reflect upon the lives that were lost in our community this last weekend. When you lose youth, and then we lost an individual that served in the military, you know, you just never know. It's just one of those things that you're sitting there, my wife and I were talking Saturday, just, we'd been to a wedding and celebrating my nephew, and to think that there was families at home that had lost some of their most important possessions, and sometimes it makes things seem so small in the projects that we work on. There's no political affiliation, there's nothing that's going on in the world today that can replace children that are taken too soon, or anyone that was just driving down the road and just in an accident at 52 years old right down here at West and 60. It's just, in the time of day when it took place, you just, you don't have answers for it, but that's not the community we are. We're just a community that believes and prays together and supports one another. And just, you know, just on behalf of our staff and everyone, I just want to say our thoughts and our prayers to those families that lost loved ones. And we do take that seriously. Those are things that we communicate. We're constantly working, unfortunately, with our transportation groups. We've had more death, this is by far the most deaths I've seen on the roads this year in our own community. I think this makes like eight or nine deaths we've seen just in the last year. I don't believe we had any more than one or two. And so, I do believe that that's something that we constantly work on. I would encourage council, the OTO legislative breakfast is this week. OTO means the Ozark Transportation Organization, which is where the funding for transportation comes from. We've been very blessed with the favor we've seen on transportation dollars, but just to show your face and to support, and just to, I'm not telling you to use these tragedies in any way, but we have got to get more attention to the fact that we're losing people in our transportation system, not just here, but on the roads in and around our area. And so, working on those efforts are very important. But again, I don't want to make it a transportation issue, I just want to say our thoughts and our prayers for those families that lost loved ones. Back to the AT&amp;T discussion from the last meeting. So, at your desk tonight, there is an update from Karen, the build administrator, regarding all that worked and all the conversations that have taken place regarding when someone tears up someone's yard and the damages that have been incurred. I heard today that somewhere it was possibly north of $20,000 worth of expenditures have been sent back to AT&amp;T to repair to make these things right. So, I know of one that was, I think it was a sewer repair for $6,000. I understand that staff met, called in the company, met with them. They provided an improvement of what they were going to be doing to notify residents better, how to remedy things a little bit faster. But at the same time, what I love about what this council, and Andrew reminded me of it today, this council passed an ordinance maybe a year ago, two years ago, that had dealt with broadband installation and right-of-way management, that gives them the right to go out and insert the city's position onto the property to make remedy and to bill that back to the company. And so far, in all those efforts, the company has worked with staff for reimbursement for the resident, for the property owner. It's still not acceptable in some instances because they're just kind of ripping through, and you're seeing things that are being torn apart, and it's like, well, we'll just pay to fix it. And so, I do believe that staff is working and doing their part. We cannot, as a city, we do not take this as a city, we don't just say, well, it's not our problem, we're not AT&amp;T, we don't run AT&amp;T. But they are doing business in our community, we do issue them a permit, so we do feel like we have the responsibility, and we do have the right to pull their permit. And so, I will tell you that everything that we can do and will do within the boundaries of the law to actually restrict, should that not be taken seriously or not repaired in a timely manner, I mean, we will pull the permit, and we will work very hard to make sure that it's done correctly. But I don't want to just say that the company has not met with our staff, the staff did not, they took the comments from the residents at the last meeting to heart, met with the contractor, tried to work on those details. And I do know that they are working better, but we're going to continue to watch on that project. So, that's the update. There is information regarding the statutes, our ordinances at your desk tonight. The microceiling project is underway, I just want to thank staff. I drove them tonight on the way, I was like, looking down at my clock, going, oh, I got to get to the council meeting, it'd be bad if I'm late. But I think this, I thought the microceiling has actually served its purpose, but what I want to say on the microceiling, I actually drove down some of the streets that we'd actually listed, and they had not actually got them done, and I want to commend the contractor. Because when the contractor got to town, they have already deteriorated, it already deteriorated to such a place, as we've mentioned in the original approval, that they did not want to waste the money to throw that onto the street, saying, listen, this is, within a year, it's going to be gone, even though we probably preferred that they went ahead and done it. I love that when the expert comes in and says, listen, this street has deteriorated to the point that you can't save it, it's going to take a rebuild or an overlay. So, you may see some streets that were on that list that did not get done because the contractor just decided it's going to cost, it would be more cost-effective to go in and overlay it. So, again, it kind of bears witness to what we've discussed before. Putting the microceil down is a cost prohibitive, like, to prevent additional cost, is not something that's going to fix it long-term, but I appreciate the contractor, that we have a contractor that partnered with us and said, I'm not going to waste the taxpayers' money either, because I wouldn't want to put it down and then a year from now saying, we told you it'd fix it, and now all of a sudden, the cracks are as big as, you know, ditches, and I just, I do appreciate that. So, staff, I appreciate, I know that you're going to get asked, why didn't my street get done, or why didn't one that was on the list get done? It's because the contractor deemed that it was, it was just beyond repair for microceil. But great job. So, the budget workshop is 11:01. What you will have by next Tuesday, a week from today, you will actually have the draft budget for your review, so you'll have a week to review the numbers and the data to call and ask us any questions that you might have. And so, always budget season is always that interesting time of the year, especially with costs going up and inflation going up. It's just crazy to try to predict a 12-month cycle for spending, especially when our own utilities are going up. So, looking forward to having that discussion. It will be from 5:30. I want to say 7:30 to 8 o'clock will be done, and then, yeah, look at the mirror. We could start eating at 5 and be talking by 5:15 if you want, I'm sure we could talk that forever, but other than that, again, my condolences to the families that lost loved ones that I have.
Thank you, sir. Reports from council?
Mr. Mayor? And I just had a question for Mr. Cameron, actually. So, I may have missed this part, did you say with the microceiling, everything that we were able to accomplish has been accomplished?
We were able to do what the contractor was able to get. We were able to accomplish everything that we intended, except the streets, that when they got to the street that was on the list, we could not do it because they did not want to put the microceil down. Even though they did the job, that microceil could not be done. And so, it was going to be somewhat of a reduction. And so, based upon the time of the year, in doing additional streets, it just was not able to throw, and plus, we can't just throw them out there if we've not brought them back to council.
Sure. So, the microceiling is finished?
No, it's not finished. They're still, they're still working. So, until it's done, we'll provide you a list of what that is, but I drove those streets today to see some of those, and the, well, I'll say this, is the microceil has done its job. Some of those that had a number of spider webs, what we call spider webs, that you can see, that have tore up the asphalt pretty good, they look, they have done their job, and so, it's nice to drive down them and see that that street's reserved and costing us $65,000 versus $650,000. So, they're close. Well, sir.
Thank you. Anything else?
Praying for our community.
Yep. Any other reports? All right. As mayor, I get to finish this off, and I owe you an apology. Our city attorney here wrote me a note saying, are you in a hurry?